And we'll see our housing authority members next year. Let's now move on to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Let's call the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council members. Asatryan?
Here.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Kasakian?
Here. And Clerk Kabajen, may we have your report?
The agenda for the Tuesday, December 13, 2022, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, December 8, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and we have three items before us. Can you please read the first item into the record?
Yes. Item number one, city manager regarding update to city council, adopted work plan, a motion to note and file report.
All right, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. This being today being the last council meeting of the year, believe it or not, we thought it would be best to provide updates on three items and initiatives that's been top of mind for council and closing out the year with these three informational reports. Start off with the adopted work plan, council, city council had adopted last year, and this is just an update as promised. All right, we get there. By way of background, so the work plan was developed after the city council workshop, as you recall, in November of 2021. And at this workshop, council covered items such as good governance, roles and responsibilities, and identified a set of priorities that include environmental stewardship, housing, mobility, connectivity, safety combined, and the fourth one being infrastructure. Subsequently, staff develop an action item list relating to these priorities, and I have to mention that this was, the list goes beyond, above and beyond the ordinary and routine operational work of the departments. And this was presented to council in December of 21 and culminated in the adoption of 55 items in the work plan. These 55 action items are broken down into the following. Each line represents a number of items per priority area. As you can see, environmental stewardship contained 13 items in the work plan, 10 items as part of housing, another 10 as part of mobility, connectivity, and safety, and the largest one, infrastructure with 22 items. After the work plan was adopted, staff, primarily Mr. Castro, built an interactive dashboard that I have shared with council, and this is an easy and convenient way of checking on the progress of these items. Anyone on council, me, department heads, executive team, on a regular basis can check the progress. I'm happy to report, as you can see, that at the six-month mark, we are well on our way to meeting our goal of accomplishing all of these items by the end of the fiscal year. As you can see on this chart, 15 items have already been completed. There are 13 items that are at least 50% complete, and five items that are at least 25% completes. Staff already started on additional, another, the rest of the 21 items. There's one item that hasn't, only one item, that hasn't yet started, and this was research and reporting on a infrastructure bond that council had requested. Because of the workload and resources, staff hasn't been able to start on this item, but I'm confident that within the next six months, there will be appreciable progress on this item. Again, it's important to note that these items are in addition to the tremendous work that our women and men of our department perform on a regular basis, day in and day out, as well as, as you know, a large number of items requested by council members that staff follow up on. We still have 42 items, active items on that list. 35 items have already been completed in this calendar year, and in the last six months, 19 of your requests have been addressed. Let's look, take a look at the progress in each priority area. Environmental stewardship, as I mentioned, 13 items, four are 100% complete, four are at least 50% complete, one at least 25% complete, and four have started but haven't reached the 25% goal yet. For housing, 10 items, three of these are 100% complete, six are at least 50% complete, one hasn't started yet. I'm sorry, one has started but hasn't reached that 25% milestone. Another 10 items, mobility, connectivity, and safety, three are 100% complete, two are at least 50% complete, three are at least 25% complete, and two have already started. Infrastructure, the largest number of items, five are 100% complete, one is at least 50% incomplete, one is at the 25% mark, 14 have started, and as I mentioned, one is yet to be started working on. Moving forward, this, this item is, obviously, we're open to questions, this is to note and file. As this process was well received by council, we are looking to do it again for the next fiscal year. We are planning to hold another council workshop in February to review priorities, and at that workshop, you may reaffirm the existing priorities, modify any of these priorities, or develop new ones, as you wish. After the priorities are developed again, we will, staff will go ahead and develop a new work plan based on your new priorities and incorporate it into the next fiscal year's budget review process. And as, as I indicated before, we will bring progress reports to council periodically to keep you up to speed as to the progress of these items. That concludes my report. Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, thank you for setting these priorities, and thank you for allowing staff to, to work on these large number of items per your priority.
Councilmember Asatryan, do you have a comment?
First and foremost, thank you for the report, and thank you to all the staff for making it possible. We may just be making these decisions up here, but you do the grunt of the work. You know, I mentioned this during the staff briefing, but I think it would be important for future updates to also include things that weren't in the work plan. I think each of us, at different times, bring up items, and it would be great to see what that complete list looks like, and if the additional items that we brought forth actually fall into those category buckets that we set as priorities. And I particularly want to thank you for the dashboard.
You have Mr. Castro to thank. I had nothing to do with it, I just use it.
It's very helpful, and it's up to date, and I, I feel like we've come into the 21st century with it, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, councilmember Najarian?
So, that's great, but my requests don't get a spot on this list, or what? The aquatic complex, remember, we talked about that? We talked about the cost benefit analysis, the cost benefit report for Verdugo Wash? I don't have many requests, really. I don't have many, but I wouldn't expect them to be left at the table, or somehow relegated to some lesser status than all these.
Never.
I mean, I, I support many of these to get reports on, not that I agree with them, but out of the spirit of cooperation, camaraderie, and relationship with staff, so if I don't get a full vote, just let me know, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll deal with it another way.
Thank you for your comments, councilmember Najarian. Maybe I went through this PowerPoint really fast, but there are two sets of lists that staff is working off. The 55 items, action items, were part of the work plan. We still have the list and the dashboard that Mr. Castro has created that contains 42 active items still on that list. Your request being on, on that particular list that we are prioritizing to, to get to and address.
So there's two lists? One is the A-list, and one is the B-list?
No, the one list that was adopted by council formally, and there is a list of requests that on any given Tuesday comes up, and you all get a second, and that goes on a different list.
You know, my problem is, clearly, there's limitations to staff's ability to prepare this. Let's say there's 20 slots available. If those 20 slots get filled up by my colleagues with all their requests, and my request, for some reason, wasn't made on time, or it wasn't as exciting, or it doesn't have, you know, a particular advocacy group behind it, I don't want that to get left down. I mean, I, you know, I've spoken to you about this before, and to council. I want some of mine in here, too. I mean, we don't have names next to each one of these, as to the proposers. I'm sure if we put names next to it, there will very maybe, may very well be quite a few from one or two council members. That shouldn't squeeze out another council member's requests, so I want to make sure that's not happening.
Yes, councilmember Najarian, Member City Council, Mr. Mayor. Again, my report was on the 55 action items that was collectively, as a body, this council adopted. Well, I apologize, the previous council adopted, right? So these were five, 55 items that the previous council, the entire council, agreed upon. And then, like I mentioned, there are items that come up on any given Tuesday that goes on the request list. Your two or three items are still on this list, and you are absolutely right. We've had this conversation before with the limited resources we have, with the staffing and the workload that we have. We have promised to get these 55 action items to some degree of completion within a year. This other list, we will get to it, time allowing, resources being available, but I reassure you, not just yours, any of the council members' requests will not be ignored or delayed. It's just a matter of resources, timing, and when we get to it.
I mean, it just seems, and let's not, let's not identify them as council members who have proposed them or have advocated for them. It seems in the past six months, every meeting, we're doing a sustainability issue. I think there has to be more balance to what we do. There is housing, there is infrastructure, there is recreation, parks and libraries. I just don't, you know, I want some balance in this.
And I agree, councilmember Najarian, and as part of the workshop in February, we really need to come up with some kind of strategy on how to prioritize council requests that are above and beyond adopted work plan. I completely agree. As far as sustainability and environmental stewardship items are concerned, most of these items required follow-up, and, and I, I recognize that we had to bring these to council for consideration, but some of them had two or three follow-up actions, and that may make it seem like we repeatedly bring sustainability item to council, at least over the last six months. But you're right, we have.
Gatekeeper. Who, who is the gatekeeper for these issues? Is it the mayor who sets the agenda typically?
Typically.
Is it, is it the city manager who?
City manager with.
That he takes direction from council, or how does?
Yeah, councilmember Najarian, typically, it's the city manager in consultation with the mayor.
This is for setting what comes before on our agendas, but just so everyone's aware, I do not make it a practice of taking any items off agenda unless there's a need for a full council to vote on an item. I don't want to give the impression that there's some sort of backdoor puppet mastering to, to get a desired result. The goal of it is to address as many items in amount of time that we have possible, which is part of the reason, as we approach the end of a calendar year, and then oftentimes at the end of a fiscal year, the meetings become more heavy with items.
And again, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, like I mentioned, I urge you, I encourage you to have a conversation at the February workshop about council individual requests, and how do we strategize and bring them forward for your consideration.
Councilmember Brotman? Sure.
Give a little bit of my perspective, and also, I do have a request. My understanding is, yeah, we went through the priorities, and I know councilmember Asatryan wasn't part of this, this was, I guess, before the last budget was adopted, right? We, and we went through this discussion, remember? We, we all voted to identify what the top priorities were, and we came up with those four, and then staff went and developed a set of, what are we calling them? Work items.
Action items.
Action items, okay. Staff came up with a, with a, action items that mapped to those four categories that we agreed on, and we, as a body, minus councilmember Asatryan, agreed on those. So those, councilmember Najarian, those were collective tasks, and then, what, what I've been hearing from the city manager is, when we bring up these additional things, it does create a burden, because staff's point is to really focus on the priorities that we've set out. So, you know, I think we've all been trying to limit the additional items that we bring forward, but things change, and there's, sometimes there's smallish things that can be added, but those kind of, my, this is my understanding, just, those are kind of on a, on a secondary list, in a way, because they're not, you know, they're our agreed items. So I think that's kind of how it's working. As far as the sustainability stuff, I think a lot of that is timing, because almost all of these are things that I asked for when I was first elected, like two and a half years ago. That's how long it takes for stuff to get through the pipeline and come out on the other end. So you're seeing a bunch of this stuff come out, but this is stuff that's been in the works for a good two years. And anyway, I wanted to say that, and this, the request is, if, if, if we could get the actual individual items, and where they are, in, in, in kind of in terms of their progress, like you have, you have them numbered, but if underneath that, if we could actually get the items so I could map to, you know, to, to those charts, and I could see which items are in the 25% category, which items are in the 50, which items are completed.
Right. Mayor Kasakian, Member City Council, councilmember Brotman, would you like to see that today, right now? Because that's part of the, what, the reason why we've created dashboard. At any given time, and it gets updated on a regular basis, at any given time, you can go to the dashboard, scroll on that item to see which one's been 50%, for example, complete, and it'll take you to those items.
Personally, I don't need to see it today, but it should be available to us and to the public.
It is available.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to give councilmember Devine a chance, if she wants to weigh in on this, and then councilmember Asatryan. I'll give the floor to you. Councilmember Devine?
Well, I, I just want to, to thank staff for all the work that they've done on, on this, not only this report, but on getting the requests from council started, completed, in the works. As has been said, council has come up with a lot of, lot of requests, a lot of asks, and with a, a staff that's a bit depleted. I think it was, it took a lot of work, a lot of hard work and time to get through the plans and the suggestions that have been made, and so I just want to, to thank them for all of that and keep up the good work.
All right, councilmember Asatryan, did you want to?
Just, I wanted to clarify, the second list I'm talking about, that should be included in this report, is that second list, that's not part of the work plan, because for me, it's important to see what our overall plans look like, and what we actually accomplished, and how much we digress from the priorities that we set.
And councilmember Asatryan, that's, that's a good point, and we'll definitely share that with, with council as soon as we can put the data together.
February. So, in February, we'll discuss that. So one of the things is, is it a first come, first served? Does every council member have a, have a set number of, of issues they can bring forward? How about Ms. Asatryan? What if she comes up with a great idea? It's got to get at the end of the list, because everything else has been, so I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but it's something we need to discuss and seek equity in this process.
I agree 100%.
We'll wait for February. We'll wait for February. I won't, I won't belabor this issue.
All right, thank you, councilmember Najarian. I would say that I think that some valid points have been raised. We do have to come up with a way where we can address the basic issues that are before us as a council, the routine issues that councils all over the state and the country deal with. In addition to those concerns, that a lot of times when we come up with an idea, it's not just because we're sitting around and it pops up in our head, sometimes sure it may, but, you know, you have a resident who comes up to you and raises an issue, and all of a sudden, it's something that you want to be responsive about. That is one of the reasons, one of the purposes of us holding these offices, and it's incumbent upon us and our duty to raise those issues either with staff or among our colleagues to receive a second and have it agendized for a deeper, more thorough discussion. I know it's not pretty, it's not smooth sometimes, it does put a heavy burden on staff, and hopefully we can come up with ways to better manage the workload, perhaps temper our own desire to, to add more to that plate, but I also look forward to that in the coming discussion. And I think it's important, because we do have a new council now, a new work council, and we have to take into consideration all viewpoints. So hopefully, this will be part of that discussion. I think last time, we had a very good, very good dialogue. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll have to note and file.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to note and file, and the second, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Asatryan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes, thank you very much.
I know, by the way, we note and file this, before we go on, just one more thought. I'm going to add something to your plate. I'm kidding, I'm not, I'm not. But what I do want to say is that after we do all these things, if we can have a discussion about how we measure the success of whatever project we've completed, what is the feedback? Do we get that feedback from the public? Do we, you know, what is the measure of our success and performance? So, and, and in regards to that, the one thing that occurred to me that I know previous councils have done, and staff has done, is there is a quality of life survey that's done in the city. Is that coming up? Are we planning on doing that, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Kasakian, Member City Council, the plan is to perform that survey, conduct that survey next year.
Okay, next year. All right, thank you. And I apologize, we moved ahead too quickly. Clerk Kabajen, if there are callers on this item or any cards, please let me know.
There are no callers.
Okay, all right. So let's move on to the second item, may we have that right into the record?
Yes, second item is community development, regarding community development annual update.
All right, Mr. Galanian, Mr. Calvert?
Yes, Mayor Kasakian, Member City Council, again, as we're closing out the year, we thought it would be a good idea to bring you up to speed to the, the work that one of our busiest department, community development, has gone through over the year with many changes, and this, and the processes that have been in place in an effort to streamline some of our permitting processes through planning and building and safety, as well as some initiatives that we are planning or proposing for next year. With that, Mr. Calvert will present this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. As I transitioned into the, the role of community development director, there were three priorities that we had identified. The first was to improve customer service throughout the department. The second was to seek for efficiencies and improvements within our processes and our systems. The third was how we tell our story, and, and that's really what today is about. The information that we convey to the public, how we really kind of tell the story of the work that we do within CDD and how it all works together. As, as Mr. Galan acknowledged, we do bring a lot of items to, to city council, but how we tell that story in continuity, how housing, how transportation permits, how all these things work together, we really haven't done that. So, so the information that you see in front of you today, in fact, we, we provided the, the booklet last week in anticipation of taking the item last week prior to being continued, really represents the prior fiscal year. So the information that you have cuts off at, at July of this year. What you'll see going forward is, is at the beginning of every fiscal year, you'll see a recap that we will bring to city council in June or July that, that provides some of the similar, similar information, but we also expect this to grow. As, as you know, we've transitioned into new systems, new means for us to collect data and collect information, but we're really kind of getting off the ground with that now. So as we continue to move forward in this document, in this annual report evolves, we expect to include new timelines, new KPIs, a lot of new information. So this is really kind of our, our first time out of the gate with this, with this annual report, but it's intended to really provide a synopsis of what all six divisions within community development do. The first one I'd like to touch on is, is planning. In the fiscal year 2122, a total of 1,592 permits were processed within the planning division. You can see a couple of the highlights here in the booklet that you were provided, that provides a full breakdown based on the type of permit. This was a slight decrease over the prior fiscal year, about 1.73% decrease, but, but largely running pretty even from year over year. You can see a pretty significant increase in the total number of appointments that we, that we took in at our counter, but we also have a, a few numbers that have been down overall for the year. Excuse me. Some of the major planning initiatives that have come out of that working group in that prior fiscal year, the approval of Hotel Indigo, this was actually the first project that was submitted under the new downtown specific plan. Council had unanimously supported this. In fact, there's, there's site work going on right now, so you can see that improvement is already starting. 130 rooms will be part of that hotel. Another major project, Lucia Park, they completed their stage one design review approval, over 200 multifamily units. We also anticipate a very, very significant contribution to the city's affordable housing fund, which was outlined during, during that process. And then on November 15th, we brought the draft report for the Verdugo Wash Visioning, that's one of our major urban design initiatives within the planning group. The planning group itself is broken up into several different kind of working groups. We have a current planning group, which are those that work with the entitlement process, design review. We have a long-range planning group, which also includes urban design and mobility, which, this is an example of one of those projects that would fit in with that long-range planning group. Other major initiatives, the adoption of the, the city's first citywide pedestrian plan, and then the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study. So that include proposals for protected bicycle lanes as part of the NoHo to Pasadena Metro BRT. So some other improvements on, on adjacent and related streets as well. These were two projects that were completed within that past fiscal year. Some of the upcoming planning initiatives and updates, as you're aware, the bicycle transportation plan, that is something we have going on right now, in fact, we're putting together our advisory working group that will help inform that plan, that will also carry along Vision Zero as part of that. As you're also aware, we recently brought forth the housing element for adoption. We will now be moving into our land use element, our circulation element, and CDD will be working with the Office of Sustainability for the Climate Action Plan as well. And then the historic survey for the East West Glendale, that is something that, that RFP is almost wrapped up now. We anticipate releasing that after the first of the year and being able to move forward with that work. Within our building and safety group, we saw a total of 19,326 permits processed. This number's a little bit misleading, because over that past fiscal year, we had moved some licensing and some other items that, that typically went through building and safety that are now going through another working group, so year over year, represents about a 10% decrease in total permits processed, but if we were to take out those anomalies, we're actually running about 3% to 4% higher than the year before. If you combine this with planning, on average, planning and building and safety are processing and completing about 83 permits per day coming out of those two working groups. As you're aware, this year, we rolled out the land management system. This was something that took a significant amount of dedication and time across many different departments, community development, ISD, public works, all to help create this system. We, we actually launched this back in September. We're kind of working out some of the, the issues and challenges. One of the bright sides of this is it's actually helping us kind of see some of the, some of the inefficiencies that we have within our own systems right now. In response to that, we're actually in the process of drafting an RFP so that we can have an outside consultant come in and take a look at our code, take a look at our processes, and help us identify where we can do better. We anticipate rolling that RFP out sometime in the first quarter of next year, and that work should last about nine months or so, as they interview applicants, our own staff, and take a look at the land use code, and try to identify opportunities for improvements and efficiencies. and efficiencies. As you know, we brought a series of requests earlier in the year to identify some land use code improvements. We're currently working through those now. This would be in that same kind of vein, identify those opportunities where we can make things a little bit simpler, a little bit efficient, or a little bit more efficient, and cut back on time. Our Economic Development Team?
Can I ask a question before we go on? Otherwise I'll forget. You know, the work on the SB 1818 process, where does that fit in? Because you didn't mention that. That would be the Planning Division.
Correct, that's the Planning Division.
And where is that? Because you didn't list that as like one of the upcoming items.
No, we only listed off a handful. There's obviously many different projects that are still ongoing. We're anticipating bringing that to the Planning Commission in March, first quarter of next year, and then returning to City Council with that as well.
Okay, because there's a lot of public interest.
And as I'll explain, and as we've explained to a few members of the public, that really, we had to get through the housing element first. We had certain state timelines, as you're aware, that we had to meet, we had to get that done. The staff that would be working on the SB 1818 and density bonus work were fully dedicated to the housing element. Now that that is out, their focus will shift to the SB 1818 work.
Okay, thanks a lot.
As part of Economic Development, a number of different small business and small business recovery grant programs. Again, this is all in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, trying to help businesses stay on their feet, reestablish themselves if they happen to be closed for a long period of time, but really working actively with our local small business community and making sure that they could stay operational and/or resume operations, especially as we've kind of returned to normal for the most part. We also adopted the Economic Development Strategic Plan. That was a three-year plan, really intended to be flexible and nimble so that we can come back and make adjustments on a year-to-year basis in response to the changing economic conditions. There were four major themes that emerged from that plan: brand identity, business culture, really kind of fostering an innovative ecosystem, and then entertainment and lifestyle. This was informed by about a 30-member panel of various businesses across the city as they provided their input in the direction and where they believe Glendale can go and how we can be of the most, kind of greatest assistance for them as well. Alfresco transitioned into a permanent program. We've seen the installations in Montrose. We are currently moving forward, and you should see a council item return here in about the next 30 days to move forward with the downtown program as well. This is really in response to the popularity and the support we saw for the temporary installations, and that is transitioning into a permanent program for both Montrose and Arts Creative and the Arts and Entertainment District, we have a number of businesses that are located within some of the city-owned spaces there that have been very successful and very thriving. In fact, the Glendale Room has received a significant amount of media coverage, and USA Today, LA Times is one of the most entertaining comedy clubs in the Los Angeles region. We have a number of other businesses there that are also thriving. Again, you'll see, likely see an item come back sometime middle of next year as we try to figure out what it is that we want to do with those spaces using this kind of pilot program to help us determine what kind of uses and what kind of businesses should be there as that street transitions to a new design. And then there's a couple of other pieces, as you'll note, provided today on the dais. This booklet here is really intended for us, again, a different way for us to tell our story. So in this includes a video. This allows us, as Economic Development, who frequently participates in conferences in different ways that we have to market ourselves, the video that you see here is one of about five different versions. This can be updated and changed and swapped out depending on who the audience is. We're also providing this to you as a tool to use when you have meetings, but it's another way for us to tell our story, particularly when we're representing the city at conferences where maybe we have a large number of attendees and there's not enough of us to be able to have a conversation with everyone that's there. This allows us to be able to tell a story based on whether it's foreign direct investment, our tech culture, our retail environment, or just the city in general. Again, the videos and that can be changed out on a regular basis, and we'll return with some chargers for City Council to use that as well. In support of our kind of tourism initiative, we also have an advertisement that was put into the Los Angeles Lakers yearbook this year, really kind of highlighting this Discover Glendale campaign. As you're aware, from the Economic Development Plan, we partnered with a number of businesses who are providing discounts essentially on a day pass, people who are visiting the Los Angeles region, encouraging them to come to Glendale and spend a day there. We were also given kind of primo real estate in this, as we were placed right next to LeBron James in this, so we're hoping that's going to attract a little bit more attention than if it was next to any other player on the team. Our Housing Division, you've seen a number of items come through over the course of the year. Significant work being done, as I argue often whenever I'm speaking to an audience, is I firmly believe that this City Council and Glendale in general is doing more for affordable housing than just about any other city in this region. You can see highlighted here rental assistance dollars that are being provided. Year over year, we're actually up about a half a million dollars in terms of direct assistance. We are a little bit down in port vouchers. You can see the monthly housing subsidy program. The allocation for that did go up for 2122, and as you're aware, that program will be phasing out, will be coming back to council to ask if there's another program that the council would like to pursue. Overall, number of vouchers slightly down, number of Section 8 waitlisted that entered in the program, 42, but as you're aware, a couple weeks ago, we received 27 new ones, so hopefully we can reduce that overall waitlist. And then our major housing initiatives, Citrus Crossing and Harrow Village. This is going to provide 167 units that will provide housing for seniors and low-income households. It's also going to be the rehabilitation of the historic building at Harrow Village. So again, being very proactive, this City Council and the city in general in terms of providing affordable housing. Another project that we have obviously is Pioneer that is going to provide 340 total units, and really provides kind of a community development, if you will. There's different scales of buildings, different sizes of units, really intended to be kind of a complete community in terms of who those residents may be. Our Neighborhood Services Division. Total number of calls and inquiries significantly increased in 2122, up by about 1,000. Total inspections completed, almost 3,000 increase year over year. So the Neighborhood Services team has been actively busy. They have significantly cut down on their backlog. In fact, we were meeting earlier today. Most staff members do not have more than a one- to two-week waiting list at this point in order to get out to a scheduled inspection. That is a significant drop from where we were before. We anticipate in the coming weeks that that waiting period will basically be eliminated or be cut down to a handful of days. As you're aware, we also revised Title V of the Glendale Municipal Code. This took out some redundancies, has helped improve some of the BRC processes. That's something that's still in progress. We're still continuing to evolve that, try to make that a cleaner and simpler process. And then our Administration Group. Total BRC renewals, we saw that hold about steady from 2021 to 2122, just over 1,800 new. We saw a slight uptick on that. We took in 451 new BRCs as well. We also used our administration team to help us in that effort to improve customer service. We have essentially established a central call center. All calls coming in for building and safety and planning now coming to a central location and then are diverted out to the appropriate divisions and appropriate team members. What we were finding is a lot of members of the general public don't know the difference between plan check and planning. Therefore, they ended up calling the wrong person. By the time they get to where they needed to go, they were often frustrated and angry. Therefore, we centralized these calls so that they are now being dispatched to the appropriate place in an effort to really kind of reduce some of those complaints and concerns. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Do we have any callers on this item, by the way?
We do not.
Okay. Councilmember Dasatryan, did you want to go?
Sure. Can you walk me through the process of how you guys handle through that call center for businesses and residents that have language barriers or don't know how to navigate the system? And I know sadly that you're working on a lot of changes in that department, but I think there's not a week that doesn't go by where I don't hear from either a homeowner or a small business that's trying to navigate the system. And I would love for us to get to a place where residents and business owners are just coming there and getting what they need, and they don't have to turn to others in hopes of figuring out how to navigate. So if you can walk me through the process of what you have now or what you plan to change, if there are changes already that you're looking to implement.
So we have a number of staff members who can offer translation services in those instances, whether it's via phone or in person. In terms of the process itself, it is very confusing. It's very convoluted in many ways, and it's very difficult to understand if you're not familiar and you have not, you know, tried to get a permit before for a business, especially for small businesses, or if you're a resident. For small businesses, we currently have a concierge team within our Economic Development Team that helps walk major projects through. We are going to start the process of kind of repositioning that so that that working group, each team member will have the necessary skill set, whether that's understanding building and safety or planning, and have them be able to walk through these small businesses and provide them with the assistance and the guidance that they will need. Some of the other changes, especially as we look at it from the perspective of a resident, of somebody who may own a single-family home or a modest multifamily building, that's what we're really hoping to glean from this RFP process, to look at our process improvements. We really need to identify where those inefficiencies are, because what we're finding is you may come in for one thing and then you get sent down a bunch of different paths as new information emerges. So again, we're in the process of crafting that RFP. We anticipate releasing that in the first quarter of next year, and then we'll bring back some kind of periodic updates to City Council so that you'll have an opportunity to inform when we find some of these inefficiencies and what that next step should be to correct them.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Najarian.
Should we break up this department? Is it too many divisions with such a wide and diverse, you know, jurisdiction, you know, housing, plan check, economic development? Is it, do you think that this is the, you know, that it's operating efficiently being this large?
I do not think the scale of it is what causes some of the challenges. I think to the prior point, discussing processes, codes themselves. I would say no, and I would say that because throughout my tenure here and the projects and the work that we've done, there is so much cross-collaboration in everything that we do here. If we look at Pioneer, Citrus Crossing, Harrow Village, planning and housing, we're walking hand-in-hand through that entire process. Obviously, planning and building and safety have to work hand-in-hand. There are likely some structural changes that need to occur to make sure that they are working efficiently together, more efficiently. And I think what we've learned is we've, especially as we've emerged from the pandemic, in terms of economic development, businesses can do their business anywhere at this point. They can pack up and go to just about any city. What we're finding and what we heard through that development of the Economic Development Strategic Plan is that things like placemaking, entertainment, urban design are some of the most important things to them. Those physical components are going to be those selling points as to why a business should be here. And also, affordable housing was one of the top things that we heard. So in my personal opinion, I believe that all of these divisions have a significant amount of collaboration and continuity that if they were to be separated from one another would likely make them run more inefficiently.
Can you give us the top deputy, if you will, or the top point person in each one of those six divisions that, one, two, three, four, in the six divisions that we have? Just so, I mean, I think I know who they are.
So we have our building official, Miralovski, as well as our principal administrator, Joseph Redarte, who operate the Building and Safety Division. Eric Kraus currently oversees our current planning operations. He's a deputy director. Tom Arsat, a principal administrative officer, oversees our admin team. Shu Wang is our deputy director of Economic Development. And then our Housing Division and Neighborhood Services is overseen by Peter Zobat, Assistant Director.
And Neighborhood Services?
Is under the Housing Division right now.
Is under Housing, oh, I got you.
Mayor Kasakian, Member City Council, Councilmember Najarian, these questions like that, we also ponder from time to time, especially with our, not just Community Development, other larger departments, and we evaluate every time the opportunity comes up for consolidation, for restructuring. So it's really not set in stone in any manner. Like I said, every opportunity we get, I get with the department has, we evaluate where we stand as far as the most efficient structure for that particular department, and CDD being one of them.
All right, thank you.
Sure. The Councilmember Devine.
Mr. Calvert, one of the issues that I hear about most frequently is the, you were mentioning continuity, and the thing I hear is consistency of answers from different staff members. If someone comes in with a question and they ask one staff member, they get one answer, and they come back and they get another answer. I think one of the things that we need is to make sure that all of your staff are on the same page, and that we don't hear, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, that, well, this one told me this, so I did that, and then another inspector comes in and says, no, you can't, you shouldn't have done that, you should do this. And I think that's something that you really have to address, and I don't know if you've done anything in that vein since you've taken over or not.
We're starting a number of processes. One is how we document and record when someone does come and visit us, so that if they return, the information that has been provided to them is recorded. That way, the effort there is to eliminate that potential conflicting information. We are also starting a customer service training process in January for our staff as well. So we're looking at a number of different things. One of the things we had to do was really let the dust on LMS settle so that we could see, one, where some of those inefficiencies were, two, so we could kind of redirect our staff and their attention on other work now that they're not helping to establish that as frequently. But we also were able to see kind of the opportunities and limitations of that system so that we can address, record, document these kind of instances, so that information that they're being provided is very consistent.
Yeah, okay. You know, the ad that you have in the, what was it, the Lakers? It wasn't in the report, so I was trying to read what information you had on that. But, you know, we had, just Sunday, I guess, the LA Times came out with their best restaurants in LA, and we had two of them here in Glendale, mini kebab and saffs. And Porto's, of course, is renowned, and I didn't see anything about any of those kinds of things in that ad, and I think that, you know, we do have some really outstanding restaurants here in Glendale, and I think that's something that we should be highlighting, especially if they get, you know, listed as, you know, top 100 in Los Angeles. So I think that's pretty darn good. So I just want to throw that out, that, you know, in the future, maybe look at that. And even the city should be, I think we should be broadcasting that, you know, sending that out to the community. This is, these are the restaurants that have been, you know, Adana over on San Fernando, nobody knows about that, but it was listed, New York Times, you know, one of the best restaurants in Southern California. When they come out here, their food critic comes out here, that's where he goes. So it's things like that, I think, that we have to highlight for our city, for our, you know, initiatives and et cetera.
And what I'll say, as our Economic Development Team, excuse me, is devising some new ways to kind of market some of those opportunities, especially when we do get a lot of notoriety. In terms of what you see in the Lakers yearbook and the businesses listed there, for council's knowledge and for the business community knowledge, we didn't randomly select who would be on that list. Those are businesses that partnered with us as part of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, who are offering some sort of perk or discount for those who are visiting Glendale. So they weren't arbitrarily chosen, those are just the ones that partnered with us. We expect, we hope, that that list will continue to grow as the years kind of evolve.
Councilmember Brothman.
Yeah, just a couple things first. Thank you for this and everything you're doing, and I think things are moving in a good direction, and I'm feeling pretty confident that they're going to keep improving. I mean, I share, you know, the concerns that I've heard from my colleagues, you know. We all hear the same thing, so we know. But I would say, I would say maybe I'm hearing a little bit less of that friction out there. It's hard to tell, but I think we're moving in a good direction, so I just, I want to acknowledge that and thank you. There are two things that I think, you know, that I've been thinking about that we, that, you know, we need to keep an eye on. One of them, we've talked about this before, is code enforcement, and hopefully that's something that we can discuss when we all get together on our, for our offsite or our workshop, whatever we're calling it. And I know you're down a bunch of people, you've been trying to hire, it's been a struggle. So anyway, I think that's something that I know you're fully aware of, but I'd like to kind of keep that on the front burner. The other one is kind of to kind of keep that on the front burner. The other one is kind of the way, and it's not really just you, it's the way transportation planning and transportation implementation intersect, and especially with active transportation. We've talked about that. And I don't really know what the solutions are to that, but I do get a sense that, you know, your team, you know, comes up with these plans, the pedestrian plan, the bike plan, whatever it is, and it gets handed over to Public Works. And I don't know that that's always, you know, that there's a good kind of ongoing connection between those two sides so that things, you know, move kind of in a consistent direction. So I just kind of, you know, wanted to mention those two areas that I think should get special attention.
Okay. Mayor Kusakian, Member of City Council, Councilmember Brotman, you and I have had this conversation, as well as other council members. And again, with the team, both CDD and Public Works, they meet on a regular basis just to collaborate and coordinate these active transportation projects, amongst other things that affects either department. But again, on a regular basis, we evaluate where we stand and what makes sense to make these projects move in an efficient and expeditious manner as possible. Now, whether it's within one department, two separate departments in collaboration together, or we'll look into finding a way that we may be able to consolidate those efforts.
I actually, hearing Councilmember Brotman bring up public transportation, I think this, one of my frustrations when I was on the Parks Commission was the collaboration between parks and planning. A lot of times, we would hear about a project that was coming that was already like too far in. And if so, if there's opportunities for the Parks Department to be made aware of applications that are coming in and projects that may be coming down the pipeline, so for you guys to be able to better coordinate the green spaces and how those get incorporated into future projects, I would very much appreciate that. And then speaking of hearing things, I think it's also very important to note that since you've been taken on the position of director, I've also been getting a lot of positive calls specifically about you and your approach from small business owners, from residents. And so I think as we discuss the concerns, I also want to thank you and point out the positives that I hear back. So whatever you're doing, please continue doing it.
Thank you.
All right. I will add to what my colleagues have said by saying, don't rest on those laurels, because as much as we hear positive things, and when we get too comfortable, we will see the tide of permits and requests for permits to rise, especially as interest rates are rising and people are not necessarily going to be able to necessarily purchase a home or move out of one place and into a new one. They may want to remodel, add, of course, the trend for building more accessory dwelling units will continue. And we'll see what Sacramento has in store for us next. That will make your staff's life much busier and much more exciting. So in regard to that, I want to encourage you, in addition to this report and all the many great accomplishments that you've outlined, to continue to plan for succession in all of your subdivisions, making sure that you're putting the right people in the right place for not only them to succeed, the individuals, but also for the organization, most importantly, for the organization to succeed. And in addition to that, ensuring that we are creating a culture that attracts some of the best. I know that not too long ago, we were having challenges retaining even some of our newest employees. People would come on and after a few months, were getting a better offer and moving to a different city. So please keep us up to date on that and any additional staff that you need. I know that overall, there's this desire to, for people to somewhat be reserved in their asks. We know that we have a very, very limited type budget. We're just working in the margins with what we can do. However, when there are things that you need in your department in order to accomplish what our expressed goals are, we expect you to say so, along with the city manager. And one thing that I would like to ask is what we are doing to ensure that we are retaining some of our largest employers in town. I know that in the past, it was perhaps somewhat of a shock and a gut punch when Nestle decided to depart Glendale. And we don't want to have a repeat of that. I haven't heard much about us going around to, I know, doesn't that remind you of those, it's like, my son loves to get me those singing birthday cards, the ones that are awesome, not annoying at all. So every time we open this, it starts talking.
This is interesting. Are you going to tell us about this? Or have you already? I'm sorry, do I miss that?
That's what I mentioned earlier in the presentation.
Yeah, and how the video can be changed for the target audience. But, Mr. Calvert, what are we doing to remain, now everyone's opening it great, what are we doing to retain and ensure that our marquee businesses and employers are plugged in, participating, feel heard, and that we're working to keep them and their employees happy?
We'll be rebooting or starting new programs in terms of outreach to make sure that we're hearing what they need. You know, part of developing the economic, or creating the Economic Development Strategic Plan helped us solicit some of that feedback and input as well. We have particular staff members who are kind of the point person for various companies. Often, they will have conversations with them to understand what they need better. But we are going to reboot and/or start new programs within this coming year to help facilitate that outreach so that we're being more proactive rather than reactive.
Okay. In anticipation of having a formalized program, when you have the list and when staff has a list of our largest employers, please do not wait too long to do outreach to them. Utilize the council as well, as well as the city staff. It doesn't always have to be someone from economic development. It can be someone from economic development accompanied by a council member. And sometimes that sends a stronger message that we actually are here to listen and we care about having your business located in our city. I know a number of individuals in this city alone that had companies and had told me that the governor of Texas or the governor of Florida or someone had directly called them and reached out to them to try and woo their company to their state. We want to make sure, you know, I'm not putting any of us, well, maybe some of us can, you know, think of themselves on the same level as governors, but I think that any one of us can easily counter that with a more local, more personalized touch and letting them know that, hey, we want Glendale to be a place where your company stays and your employees are happy. That is all I have. Thank you.
With that, I don't think that there's anything, there was no action to note and file this. We appreciate your time and your efforts, and we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next item. Please.
Next item is Public Works Regarding Sanitary Sewer CCTV Assessment Project.
Mr. Galanian, Mr. Imroni.
Mr. Kusakian, Member of City Council, this is the last informational report of the afternoon, and this falls under one of your priority areas, namely infrastructure and our sanitary sewer system being, playing a large role in all of our infrastructure system. And Mr. Imroni and staff have taken the first steps in evaluating the condition of the system. And then in the near future, we will come to council with a request for appropriations so that we can take care of and address this aging infrastructure system. Mr. Imroni.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. The long wait is over for the most important item on today's agenda, as far as I'm concerned. It's a sanitary sewer assessment. And it's not just the CCTV that we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about in general, the, what role the sewer system really plays in the infrastructure. So just to start things off, a little bit of a background, we have a very large system, almost 2 million linear feet of pipe, from six inches to 48 inches in diameter. Now, the main thing is that we are fortunate that we only have one large lift station within the city. We have good topography, so we don't need too many lift stations. But that lift station, the Duran Lift Station, discharges 1 million gallons per day. So that's a very large, large amount. And in terms of a discharge, we do have different discharges. Six of them go to Lagwerp, which is the LA Glendale Water Reclamation Plant, and one of them goes to the High Period. So it's a very sophisticated and large system. In terms of sanitary sewer assessment, there are tools available for us to do that. Sanitary sewer has this distinction, as I'd like to call it, is the stepchild of infrastructure because it's out of sight, out of mind. You know, when we see a pothole or we see a crack in a road or something, everybody notices that. But we really don't have a way of seeing what's going on beneath the ground. So these assessments are a way of looking at the long-term serviceability of the system. And then also, we also have to be, to make sure we don't have what's called SSOs, or sanitary sewer overflows. Basically, these are the State Water Resources Control Board, which is our equivalent of EPA, passed a set of regulations back in 2006, basically putting all the cities on notice that if they have more than one mile of sewer, they have to basically implement a series of steps to make sure their sanitary sewer system is in compliance. And just like everything else we do, this is a 12-step program. So it's, CCTV is only one of those 12 steps. So it is a technology that's been around since the 70s. And it's just like the iPhone, it keeps getting better every year with the better cameras and better software. The thing that hasn't been agreed upon by a lot of municipalities is one rating system. Everybody kind of employed their own rating system until about 10 years ago, where everybody coalesced more or less around this NASCO, what's called NASCO, National Association of Sewer Service Companies, and the PACP methodology. So everybody, 90, I would say currently 90% of the municipalities throughout the country use this methodology. Now, before we get to that, let's look at our sanitary sewer assessment implementation. We've never televised the entire sewer system for the city of Glendale. We've done it in patches, but it hasn't been done in one fell soup. So one of my goals was, when I got here, is to make sure we did that and we televised everything. And we kind of put away funding, and now we're able to move forward with that. This year, we've completed, as of November of this year, 500,000 linear feet televising of, or 25%. And the goal is to do it in the next two years, finish this program, 750,000 next year, and then 650,000 to balance in the third year. We looked at four different maintenance districts. We have 12 throughout the city, and we did four of them. And those are maintenance districts two, four, five, and seven. And Maintenance District Two is the Adams Hill area, basically. Maintenance District Four is Glen Oaks Boulevard, east of North Verdugo. Number five is the East Chevy Chase Canyon, and seven are the Verdugo foothills. And this was just to make sure we have a small enough sample, yet manageable, that we could perform the CCTV. In terms of the grading system, what we look for in the PACP is a rating from one to five, with five being the most significant defect, one being minor defects. But nothing stays static in the underground utilities, especially with water and sewer. And basically, because we are, this is earthquake country, the tremors that we may not feel, twos, threes, the pipes certainly feels. And then, you know, they basically, we get a lot of offset joints, we get cracks, because most of the pipes are vitrified clay, which is a very rigid type of pipe. This just shows the PACP grading system. So you start with the highest severity grade. So for example, it's a four-digit number for each defect. So it's, for a pipe, excuse me, pipe segment. So you may have a 5, 8, 3B, which means this has eight of the worst defects, which is number five. And B, sometimes we run out of one through 10, so we go to A, B, C, D. So B means 14 of the next highest severity, which is a grade three. Now, this just identifies the top two defects. It doesn't mean that we won't have like twos and ones in here either, or even twos and ones. But this is just, gives us a snapshot of what's going on for each pipe system. Now, having said all that, what did we find when we went through this 500,000 feet? Well, for each district, you see the line segments and the number of defect ratings of four or five. We focused on those top four or fives only. Number of individual defects of those four or fives, length of line segments that included those four or fives, and then what's the percentage for that district? So as you can see, I'll just look at the first column from the right. You know, we have 31%, 25%, 14%, 29%, average of 25% of defects of four or five. Four or five basically is a hole in a pipe or sections of the pipe missing, which is very serious. And so we try to, once we identify these, we try to fix them as quickly as possible. When you have these types of defects, it leads to exfiltration. So, and, you know, it has consequences. So on average, we found about a 25% of highly, you know, high-level defects, and which added to about 124,000 linear feet. Now, this is a, I'll show you a lot of pictures here. This is a picture of what a good pipe looks like. You know, you have, you know, no cracks, you know, the first joint is very well balanced, there's no offset joints. And this is on Old Phillips Road. It's one of the pipes in District Seven. The next few pictures are the bad pipes. So this is an example, a couple of examples from District Two. The picture on the left, you have a broken, you have a large cracks on both sides. The picture on the right, you have cracks and you have roots. Now, the problem with cracks is that sewer pipes obviously carry water, and plants are attracted to water. So the roots start migrating and going through the cracks or the holes. And over time, essentially, they grow and grow and grow, so that eventually it becomes a root ball. And it restricts the flow. And that's when you have a lot of overflows, because the water can't get around it. We have to go in and clean it out. So this is a couple more examples of broken pipes. And in District Four, one is in District Two, District Four, there's some missing pipes actually here. And then these are examples of, again, more roots. As I mentioned, these roots have grown over time. So the pipe, the picture on the right especially, the pipe looks to be in okay shape, but because of the roots, you're going to have probably an overflow over time if the roots are not cleared. And then, again, we have some other examples of, this is private laterals that are coming into the pipe instead of being flushed. So these are, could be examples of, you know, people that just piped into our sewer line without permits, basically. And it's obstructing the flow. And if it's not done correctly, you see on the picture on the left, there are some gaps around that intrusion, so that's where the roots come from. And this is an example of excessive grease. It's one of the reasons, as a kind of a partner program, and one of the other steps of the WDR regulations, we have a FOG Control Program. FOG stands for fats, oils, and grease. We have an inspector that goes out to all the restaurants throughout Glendale to make sure they have grease interceptors, basically. And these collect the grease. So instead of dumping them into the sewer, they have to have their own, basically, they have to carry it into a separate location for disposal, instead of dumping it into the sewer line. But this is what can happen in the sewer, and over time, it solidifies. And again, it becomes very hard to get rid of grease. There are some, I have some videos here. Let me see if I can. Play them. There we go.
You want me to start it?
Sure.
There you go.
So this is the, this is a pipe that's actually missing, as you can see. As you can see, some pipe walls. There's a hole that's visible, and they call it based on a clock face. And this is the sort of thing that we wouldn't know, without actually having these, done these CCTV programs. The next one is another video, if you could start that, Orin.
There you go.
Thank you. So this, this is one that basically is missing some portion of its wall completely. And again, it's, we wouldn't know what's going on if we didn't have this CCTV technology. And then this is, I believe, the last one, if you could start this one too, please. As you can see, the clay pipe is broken up on the right-hand side, and also on the left-hand side. So again, over time, you have broken pipe, you know, pretty much on the bottom half of the pipe. Oh, one more, but it's just more, more broken pipe. So, and it's a hole in this case that's visible, basically. So we are doing this to prevent, as I mentioned, SSOs, overflows. Every time we have an overflow, we have to report it to the State Water Resources Control Board. The three largest causes of SSOs here are roots, which is, account for 73%, debris, including rags that people flush down, and then grease deposition. And then you have other elements. And these are reported on a monthly basis to the State Water Board database. These are our most recent, three most recent overflows and the cause. 12 of them are root intrusion, one of them is construction debris that was basically forced down the sewer line. And the number of gallons. The issue with that, obviously, is, you know, we're supposed to have zero gallons going from the sewer to the storm drain, which are bodies of, the water bodies of the US. So the State Water Board monitors this very closely. So what does all this mean in terms of our repair? Based on a preliminary analysis that we've done, just from these four locations, or from these four districts, and again, just focusing on the 4s and 5s, not the other 1s, 2s, and 3s, the defects. This is the average estimated repair cost that we've come up with. So 2 million, 2.2 million, 2.2, 6.3. So these four districts, 12 and 1/2, or almost $13 million, excuse me, in estimated repair costs, which is surely going to go up, once we add the other defects to it. Now, I went ahead and kind of extrapolated this. If we do the rest of the system, this is only 25%. So if these hold true for the rest of the system, we're looking at $49 million just to repair structural and operational deficiencies. We also did a sewer master plan. A couple of years ago, we updated the one that was, the last one was done back in the 80s. And that looked at hydraulic deficiencies within the pipe. That means the pipe is undersized, essentially, for whatever reason. And that estimate was $19 million for fixing the hydraulic deficiencies of the pipe. So together, just between those 2, we are looking at $68 million in investment needs, again, not, you know, going through the lower-level defects, which is what we're looking at right now. So that's my last slide. Just wanted to give the council an update on what we're doing, and what we're going to continue doing, making sure that we fix our sewer system and make sure we don't have any issues, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Emrodi. Councilmember Devine.
Now, it's a big job, huh? Big job. Wow. Do you do any outreach to our residents regarding the fact that they should not be putting grease down their drains? I know, when growing up, I was always taught that, don't put bacon grease down the drain. Is that something that, do you have a program that does that now, that tells people that don't do this?
Councilmember Devine, we do have, we do have that, and we do have, we do have it on our website. We have, the major producers of grease are the commercial sector. So as we visit and inspect those, what we call FSCs, or food service establishments, we provide them with information regarding where to dispose of grease if they don't have grease interceptors, and we educate them about that on a regular basis.
Okay. And would you say in Maintenance District number 7, that's the Verdugo Foothills, Verdugo Road, Lexington, North Brown, is that mostly root problems? Do you, can you?
Yes.
Kind of get into the weeds on that?
Absolutely. The, well, in fact, in all 4 that we inspected, the major cause was roots. Because that's the, and as we have these overflows, and we go out there, and our staff does a great job, and Mr. John Hickser, Sewer System Superintendent is here, and he can testify. That's what we find day in and day out, is that roots are our number-one issue throughout the city. 70, over 70% of our problems are due to roots.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the streets that are listed in these sections, and I don't know that there are a lot of restaurants, you know, Chevy Chase, or Verdugo, Lexington, Mountain, yeah. So it's basically roots. So it must be even worse than in the downtown area, where there are restaurants that are dumping, right?
If they don't have, again, our goal is to make sure that they don't dump any grease in the sewer system. Right now, I would say 7% of our total issues with SSOs is grease-related. But we, as we catch them, we educate them, and, you know, we, you know, tell them of ways of, alternate ways of disposing of grease, absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you. Great report. Interesting.
Najarion, then Councilmember Brotman.
So we see these vitreous clay is getting damaged. Are there other technologies of pipe that are being used that would prevent this from happening?
Councilmember Najarion, absolutely. The vitrified clay was, I guess, the standard 50, 60, 70 years ago. Whenever we replace a piece of pipe, we replace it with PVC, which is plastic pipe. It's more flexible, first of all. So it's, it's a little bit more flexible when earthquakes happen, not, clay is very rigid, and it breaks. So we replace these with PVC as we come across for smaller diameter pipes. As we get to larger diameter pipes, we have other options. We do also try to minimize disruption to the residents. So we try to look for what's called trenchless technology, which is basically putting liners through the sewer manholes. Instead of digging up the whole street, we go between 2 manholes and insert this liner, and then force hot water through the liner, and then it expands and sticks to the walls of the sewer pipe, and then it becomes hard over 24 to 72 hours. So we do use, bring it up to 21st century.
Yes, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, so you said for these, what was it, 3 districts, 4 districts?
4 districts.
4 districts. You had that number, 12.8 million. That's to repair the 4s and 5s. But then you said it will go up as we add other defects. What did you mean by that?
So we focused on 4s and 5s, and we came up with an estimate to replace these. We will look at the, at least the 3s, because, again, each year, the defects in the sewer system doesn't stay static. So the, if a crack is a 2 or a 3, next year is going to be a, 3s will be 4, 2s will be 3s, 1s will be 2s. So we try to look at the more serious ones and address them at the same time. Now, these were, most of the time, looking at what we call spot repairs. So looking at a section of 4-foot or 8-foot pipe to be replaced. If we find, for example, there's a symphony of 4s and 5s and 3s and 2s, we're going to reline or replace, the average length of a sewer pipe is 250, 300 foot. We may replace the whole pipe, because it doesn't make sense to go in and surgically just replace 4-foot sections or 2-foot sections. So the cost may go up. But if we, at the same time, if we do look at replacing the whole pipe, it may actually provide some savings, because we're not, relining, in some cases, is cheaper than, you know, replacing the small section. So it may, it may go up a little bit, but depends on, you know, how many more defects, or how much more defects does a pipe have.
Okay, so that, and then you had the $68 million number. Well, you had 40 million, 49 for repairs. So is that, basically, you're taking, you're kind of saying, if these 3 that you surveyed, if these 4 that you surveyed are pretty much what we're going to see across the city, if they're representative, then that would be the cost, 49 million to repair. But that's still the 4s and 5s you're talking about, or are you talking about?
It's still the 4s and 5s. So this would be, we would have a much better idea, once we finish the, you know, CCTVing the whole system. But again, there might be some that will go up, there might be some that may go down, because we're going to replace the whole segment between manholes. So there might be some economies of scale there. But it's not going to be, I don't expect this number, for example, to double, but it may go up by 10, 15%.
Okay, so that 49 or 15 million would be really, citywide, if we wanted to take care of all the 4s and 5s?
All the 4s and 5s. There might be, again, some, that's 19 million that I showed below for hydraulic deficiencies, could be some of those pipes. We haven't done the cross-reference between the 2 yet. We haven't had a time to go through. It's just, we just finished it in November. But that could be some pipes that are also, that not only are in bad shape structurally and operationally, they could be hydraulically deficient. So when we go in there and take care of the repair, we might as well change an 8-inch pipe to a 10-inch pipe or 12-inch pipe, and kill two birds with one stone.
Okay. And then, my last question is, so how do, do we have any idea, like, how we compare to other cities? Are we in good shape? Are we in bad shape? How imminent, how, like, urgent is it? Because that's obviously a lot of money. Maybe if we have an infrastructure bond, we can use some of the money to deal with this. But is this something like, are we really in bad shape?
Councilmember Brotman, the, my experience is that we're, we fall into a, an average group of cities, basically, because a lot of cities have this issue. They have bad sewers, that's, you know, they haven't, again, been addressed in a long time. And these systems have been in existence for 100, at least 100 years. Down in Southern California, here's 85, 95, 100 years are the average age of these sewer pipes. So we, what we're trying to do is identify what those are, and address those, and then develop a CIP, just like what we do for, with our pavement management program for our roads, is to put together a CIP for our sewer system, and try to address them as we, over a number of years. Because you can't fix everything right away, but over a 10-year program or longer, and one option would be to use the infrastructure bonds, to take care of these.
Uh-huh. But are we, I mean, would you say, you know, because we hear a lot about deferred maintenance, and we get, you know, kind of criticized that we haven't been keeping up our infrastructure. So is this the kind of thing where we're, kind of, we need to step up the annual investment, the annual spend to do this from what we've done in the past? Have we been kind of letting this get worse? And we're going to have to start picking up the pace?
Councilmember Brotman, my recommendation would be yes. Because, again, the issue with the sewer, with the underground structure, especially water and sewer, is that, especially with the 4s and 5s, if they're not addressed right away, and you do have this exfiltration, it can lead to saturation of the soil and liquefaction. And then, once you have that, you may get sinkholes. And sinkholes don't give any warning. They happen. So it does behoove us to move forward and address these on a systematic basis. Again, there's, we can't fix everything, you know, at once, but we do have to, in my opinion, increase the pace that we've been doing this. We do have a budget on an annual basis, I should say, that we are going after these, kind of the worst of the worst, as far as the sewer repairs are concerned. So we do have a budget that we try to stay ahead of these. But with the magnitude of what we're discovering, we have to, we have to take it to the next level, in my opinion.
All right. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Well, I want to just say that I support our efforts to prioritize this. It's one of those maintenance things that may not be exciting, or may not be flashy. A lot of people won't see it, because until the work's being done, then they'll complain that there's work being done on their street. But once it is done, it will hopefully last for the next, you know, conceivably 100 years, right? Because I believe most of the improvements are places where we would replace, things would be done in, what, PVC?
PVC.
And from what I can understand, and Mr. Hickson, Mr. Emrodi, you can correct me, that is the material of choice, it's durable, it hasn't shown any signs of, I mean, our clay pipes have done remarkably well. And thank you for those videos of what I will refer to as a municipal colonoscopy, I guess, of sorts. Not the most appetizing thing to watch, but it is what it is. But we need to get this done, especially, you know, if we're planting trees, and we're proud of the fact that we are a Tree City USA designee. We have to make sure that our pipes can hold up with that as well. So I thank you for this report, and I would actually urge staff to try and seek funding from either the state, or even from federal monies that are available, because I do think this is an environmental issue. The recapturing of wastewater, treating it, there was just an article about the purchasing of water rights in the valley, I think by City of Los Angeles, or treating it in order to use it. So even polluted sources of water are absolutely essential. We know now, through proven technology and use, that reclaimed water can be used throughout the city, and we can't waste a single drop. So let's make sure that our pipes are not wasting those. And of course, there's a danger of sinkholes as well. We haven't had any so far, knock on wood, but we don't want to have any in the future, so.
We did. There was one right in front of my house.
Oh, was there? Well, hopefully not. I'm envisioning the larger sinkholes where, yeah.
But a car fell into it.
Yeah. So we don't want any more sinkholes. Thank you.
If I can just add, I know when we talked about this previously, the funding for our sewer system, and we mentioned the possibility of Measure S funding, and also, I think I brought up the fact that if it really gets dire, you know, we have a very substantial reserve, we can, I would think that we could, if we can't get state or federal funding, we could always reach into that, that funding to help out with this issue. Thank you.
Yeah. We should look at all sorts of, all sources of possible funding, including dipping into what, you know, our reserve or savings. Because, as I said, this is like one of, if you own a home, this is a routine maintenance. It's like changing the roof on your house. You hope that'll last 15, you don't have to do it again for another 15 or 30 years. So with that, thank you for the report. There's no actions associated with this item. We can now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All right. We stand adjourned at 4:38, and we'll just wait before we call the city council meeting to order to read the closed session items. Thank you to staff. All right. Let's call the city council meeting to order, and the Haverell Call.
Councilmembers Asaturian?
Here.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarion?
Here.
Mayor Kasakian?
Here. Can you please read the closed session items into the record?
Yes. Closed Session A, Conference with Legal Property Negotiators. Property location, real property generally located at the terminus of New York Avenue, near Park Vista Drive, commonly referred to as Mountain Oaks. Negotiating parties, FENM Inc., Employees Defined Contribution Plan Trust, dated July 10, 1984. Agency negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Olanyan, John Tachalian... Agency negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Olanyan, John Tachtalian, Michael Jerry Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, Bradley Calvert, Jason Bradford, and Onik Bulanikyan. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms of the acquisition of property. B, Conference with Legal Counsel Pending Litigation, F E N M Inc., Employees Defined Contribution Plan Trust, dated July 10, 1984, versus City of Glendale et al., LASC case number BS16989. C, Conference with Legal Counsel Pending Litigation, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 18, versus City of Glendale case number LA-CE-805-M. PERB decision number 2694-M, Conference with Legal Counsel.
You can stop there. It's twice on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there one more item?
Yeah.
There's one more item, yes.
Mayor, do you have one more item? We want, we're requesting to add an item that arose after the posting of the agenda, and where there's a need to take immediate action. So I would ask that the council find that there's an immediate, make a motion to find that there's an immediate need to take action on an item that arose after the posting of the agenda for the December 13, 2022 council meeting. The item in question involves the need to discuss possible resolution of the litigation entitled Papikian versus Martinez et al., L.A. Superior Court, case number 21STCV13642, to which the City of Glendale is a party. Subsequent to the posting of the agenda, additional information has been provided, which requires discussion by the council prior to the next council meeting on January 10, 2023.
Okay. Second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please, to add this item to the record?
Yes. Councilmember Asatiran?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Do we anticipate reporting out on any items?
We do not.
Okay, then we'll recess to closed session. Thank you.